I'll call the meeting to order. Will you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and the Constitution of the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's meeting is being broadcast by McCammon and is also being recorded by Verizon. With that, we'll move down to our first item on the agenda, which is unanticipated. Any board member have anything unanticipated? Mr. Fraley?
Yes. I received a call a few weeks ago from one of my favorite constituents, and she was asking me if we could possibly get a sign that lists the offices that are in the town hall building and the bank building.
There's still some confusion out there as to...
She has a physical handicap, and she went all the way into the bank building only to be told that the office she was looking for was over here, and so it can be difficult for her. But she wasn't angry. She just thought it might be a good idea. It was a suggestion.
Do we have that information on the website?
Oh, yeah. It's on the website.
It's on the website?
She knows that now.
She knows that now?
Yeah.
What she's looking for, are the signs somewhere else?
She just thought that maybe a sign on the building would be a good idea.
Well, I guess the next board could take that up.
It's gonna be one of those notes, huh?
It could be. It could be.
Hey, we have to deal with the water rate, the water rates and sewer rates.
That's gonna be our parting gift.
The new selectmen can come in and say, "Those guys, those guys put a big..."
Yep. I don't know, Charlie, is there anything we can do about that?
You know, we used to have signs all over this building directing people to the bank building, and my experience is people don't read signs. They search out a person and ask them where things are. But we could figure something out. I'm sure we could figure something.
We do have a sign when you walk into the lobby of the bank building. Bet you're already in the building, right?
Yeah.
It's got what's listed on the board.
I was just, I figured I'd pass it on. And I would also like to say thank you to Mr. Spataro and to Mr. Rulo for all their time and dedication to the town. Obviously, I know how much time there is in this type of job, and I'd also like to say thank you to Mrs. Rulo for giving up her husband for all these hours.
Thank you very much.
Al, even when we disagreed, I always felt like we were on the same team, and I appreciate that. You've done a lot for me, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's been my pleasure. Anyone else under unanticipated? Anyone in the audience? Go on down, Brian. It wouldn't be a meeting without you jumping up.
Absolutely. Under anticipated, announcements-wise, I think we cover them. I just wanted to welcome hopefully some new, because all the candidates are here, the new candidates after tomorrow night. So make sure you guys all go out and vote tomorrow, all day, 7:00 to 8:00 at night. But I also want to make mention that this Saturday is the Middleborough Friends Pancake Breakfast at the COA to benefit the COA. All the proceeds go to the COA. It's a great event. It's $6 for adults. It's $4 for children. So it's a great event. Pancakes, eggs, sausage, bacon. It's a great event. It's open to the public, so come on down from 8:00 to 11:00 on Saturday at the COA. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it must be a great breakfast because we have repeat customers. Right, Jane?
Right.
Anyone else?
I understand.
Chairman? Mr. McKinnon.
Given the fact that you've abandoning us in our time of need...
Jesus.
Rather high. You're not the only one. I can throw shots, you know. I do want to say thank you to both of Steve and you for all of your efforts and all of your work. Steve, you've been doing town government, be it either here or across the street, for, what, the better part of the 100 years or so. But, and Al, the past couple of years of your leadership, we did a lot done. We did a lot of good stuff, had a lot of fun, like we talked about today.
Yep.
And you'll be missed.
Thank you.
You'll be missed. And Steve, you'll be missed, too.
Thanks, guys.
Al, should we tell him?
Well, we're not going? Right in? Right in.
That Al and I are the new owners of Edgeway.
Oh, Jesus.
Just kidding.
Just a joke. Just a joke. Come on.
Just a joke.
Well, in that case, we've got something else to discuss. But in that, given that set of circumstances that you are leaving, and we are going to have next week two new people working here, could we, in this week we have, Charlie, gather up the necessary booklets that everybody's gonna need? Because we'll have to do a little training next week, kind of get everybody spooled up with some of the stuff that we do. We won't necessarily cover everything, but at least it'll, you know, it'll give them a little bit of groundwork and some reading, little light reading to do.
So it begins.
Did we give members copies of the Selectmen's Handbook in the past year as well?
Yeah, I think I gave mine back when we had new members elected and Al and Charlie were on the board then.
Do you have one? Can I borrow that back? Because I don't think we have a copy now in the office, and even though it's a little out of date, it's still very useful information.
I think Dan must have the other one.
I might have one at home, too.
Yeah, if you do, that'd be great.
I'll bring it. I'll try to get it over here this week. Also, the Board of Health regs. You'll need to get a copy of those. Delightful little darlings to go through. And I don't know if we can get any green books. You guys probably stole them all over there at Edgeway, but the 140... Yeah, no doubt, with or without pictures. And the operating instructions for the Board of Direction, or Board of Selectmen, rather, that we put together a couple of years back, and your infamous and famous financial document that nobody read, but we all accepted, which looked good on paper.
Yeah, probably be a good idea to put together a packet for income.
Right.
You've got, you got a list?
Good. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving down to announcements and recognitions. Anybody on the board? Mr. Fraley?
Tomorrow's election day for both the local and the state primary. You can pull two ballots if you'd like. If you're a Democrat, you can pull a Democratic primary. If you're a Republican, you can pull a Republican primary. If you're unenrolled, you can pull either. So please, if you're unenrolled, you can still vote in the primary. Vote either or primary, not vote primaries. But I think that's important to remember. And please get out and vote. We have a lot of good races. I'm personally very interested in the Selectmen's race, when I receive on your side of me, and the primary for the Senate seat as well. So take the 10, 15 minutes out of your day and make sure that you can vote. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to just say a couple of words. One, I want to thank my fellow board members for all the support you've given me during my chairmanship here for the last two years. You've made it a lot easier. I think we've got some things accomplished during time working together. And it has been fun. We've disagreed at times, but most of the time, and all of the time, we've come together afterwards and attacked the next issue. And I think that says a lot about this board. We kept the process moving forward. We kept the process open, and we continue to work together. We would debate, sometimes more hiddily than others, but at the end, I think we mostly came to the right decision, and we all worked together. And for that, I thank you all. I also want to thank the citizens of Middleborough. One, for voting for me twice to serve you here on the board, and also for your participation. This form of government we've chosen here wouldn't work without your participation. Whether you agree or disagree, it's important that you're here. It's important that you participate, and it's also very important that the Board of Selectmen allow them to address us. I think that's important. I also want to thank my friends from Edgeway. We've had some fun over the past few years, and I'm sure the fun's going to continue for a little while. I hope it ends for you in a way that, you know, resolves your issues in your park. So with that, thank you. It's been my honor to serve you during these past four years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to just follow up on that. All the comments that you made, I feel the same way. For the people that watch it on TV, sometimes it's funny the way that we debate. It's always civil, and we always come to a conclusion for the betterment of the town. But sometimes, you know, we get along all very well, but either debate in public is fair game, and it makes a decision that we make that much sharper, cleaner, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to thank all the managers that work for the town, because they made our jobs easier as well. We have a great group of professional managers in all departments, and when they've come before us, I can count on one hand the times that maybe the data was incomplete out of all the years that we were there. It was always very thorough, well thought out, solid recommendations. Sometimes we went with them, what times are not. Sometimes we saw things a little bit differently, but after a decision was made, everybody moved towards that decision. We didn't have any of the old Heisman, "Yeah, I agree, but I'm not going to do it anyway, even if you say yes." You know, we didn't have any of the nod like this. You know, the town worked in a singular direction, and everybody here on the board has always had the best, all of us, has had the best interest of the town at heart, irrespective of whether we disagree. So I believe that discussion that we have Monday night, month in and month out, year in and year out, was always made our decisions from the sound. So again, there's people here at the desk. Jackie, thank you. Charlie, thank you. And please pass that on to any of the managers throughout the department.
Thanks, Steve. There remains, I do need to thank Jackie and Charlie. You've made my job a lot easier here, getting me prepared for these meetings, so I don't act as stupid as I really am. And I want to meet you both. You did a great job. You do a great job for the town, and I hope it continues for a long time. The two of you stay here and continue to support the work of the Board of Selectmen. And Charlie, you do a wonderful job for the town, and I appreciate that. And I think all the people in Middleborough appreciate that. One more person. I want to thank my wife, Nancy, because she's put up with a lot of stuff. I'm not around as often as I used to be, and that may have been a good thing, all right? So now, now you're really gonna find out what retirement's all about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When you said that, you said you put up with a lot of stuff. What were you pointing at us for? Didn't do anything.
All right. Anyone else under announcements or recognitions? We'll move down to approval of the minutes, the regular minutes for April 13th.
Motion, second.
April 8th, I mean. April 13 is the year. April 8th. We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Executive session minutes for April 8th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and a second and any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next, I want to entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or his designated assigned warrants for the week ending April 26th.
So move.
Second.
Have motion and a second and any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. New business. First item is vote to approve town manager's recommendation for a 2% cost of living increase for non-bargaining employees. Charlie, you want to talk to this?
Yeah, this was an employee we left off the list that you approved several weeks ago, so asking that you add Amy Dowler from the Police Department.
All right. So we're just adding one from the approvals we made last week?
Right. Right. We overlooked this one person.
Motion to approve?
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Vote to approve Memorial Day activities. I see a Veterans Agent in the audience. Hi, Paul. How are ya?
Good.
Welcome.
Congratulations on surviving for two terms.
Thank you.
And you too, Steve, for all those terms. Anyway, we've got Memorial Day coming up in the month of May, and Memorial Day actually starts for the veterans community this coming Saturday. We'll be putting the flags on the cemeteries around town, on the veterans' graves, and we'll be meeting at 7:00 at the VFW for free breakfast and going out hopefully in two groups. And by noon time, we'll have all the cemetery flags replaced at the major cemeteries. But Memorial Day will be on the 27th itself, Monday, the 27th, and the parade will step off with your permission sharply at 10:00, and we'll use the same route we've used for the last couple of years around town. And this year, we'll be honoring John F. Glass Jr., who's a World War I veteran that the VFW is named for, and we've never honored him. So we'll have somebody standing in in a proper World War I uniform, and the commander of the VFW will be part of the master ceremonies for the ceremony. So right after the parade, we'll have the Veterans, the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans' Memorial Park. The VFW normally has its poppy drive around Memorial Day, and they'd like permission to do that from the 23rd to the 27th. Also, we'd like to put signage up around town in regards to this, one here on the town hall lawn and one up at the intersection of 105 and 28. And that does it.
Thank you. So you're looking for our approval?
I am.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and a second to approve the events for Memorial Day.
Question.
Mr. McKinnon.
Sign at 105 and 28. That's not a town property, right?
If we had permission from the owner of the property.
From the owner of the property, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spataro.
Before we get too far away from our thank yous and the comments that we made, I did say the managers in the town. I also meant to say employees. I did not have a prepared statement, so I did not want to be remiss on that. You know, whether it was the snowstorm to the hurricanes and guys up in the bucket trucks, out following the streets, you know, a smile on their face when you went to ask questions about taxes or whatever, you know, we've got a great group of people that work on behalf of the town and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is vote to declare Park Department 1990 GMC dump truck a surplus.
The move?
The move?
I'm sorry. Got ahead of you.
That's okay. Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Just want to summarize this memo that was sent by Franny Cass, our Park Superintendent. This is a 1990 GMC. The vehicle was donated by the Middleworld Gas and Electric Department in 2006. The roof leaks. The door locks are inoperable. The exhaust needs replacing. All the braking system needs to be replaced, and it requires a famed car number. So it's apparent that this thing is a piece of junk, and he's asking us to surplus it. Have motion and say, anybody else want to talk about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Item D, vote to sign the healthcare renewal for FY14. Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, the rate increase for next year is 7% on the HMO plan and 10% on the PPO plan. It's down a little bit from what we thought it might be, but still rather high.
It's still rather high, but we've got it covered in the budget.
We have it covered, yeah.
We have it covered in the budget that we just passed. But you're right. This is one of those items in the budget that we need to keep our eye on and try to keep this increase year over year as low as possible. So, Mr. Spataro?
And when we talk about increases, this is a pass-through. This is what they charge us, right? I mean, this isn't a rate set by you. This is...
Oh, no. This is the rate from my...
Right.
Okay. Want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is to approve a betterment agreement for 99 Highland Street in the amount of $29,874. All those.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion? These are betterment agreements we approve just about every week to help residents of Middleborough improve their septic systems. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is vote to approve the YMCA road race on June 1st, 2013, and a triathlon on June 7th.
July 7th.
July. What's it, June 7th?
June 1st and July 7th.
It says June 1st and June 7th. My agenda.
On my iPad.
Ooh. On the iPad.
It says July 7th.
I guess iPad always is it...
Well, on the letter, Mr. Chairman, if you cared to read the whole letter, it says July 7th.
It's gonna be a fun night, isn't it, guys?
I realize there's only four words, four letters in July and June.
I have to use this as a club.
No, yeah.
You're right. It is July 7th according to the request. We have memos here from both the police chief and the fire chief indicating that they have no issues. The fire chief just wanted to have them, send them their emergency plan, such as, you know, two rescue drivers, what services they'll need from the fire department to ensure safety for the participants in the triathlon for the divers, and he wanted to make sure that we have access, emergency access during these events.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With the condition that they submit their safety form, right?
Yeah. What about a...
Trash pickup.
Trash pickup.
Cut you down, did we? Get you.
Don't tell anybody. That kind of word spreads fast.
With those two additions, the motion?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a second?
Second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone here sponsoring this race want to speak? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is vote to adopt seasonal water use restrictions. We have a request from our Water Superintendent. We do this every year. Apparently, we have two options of adopting. One is a calendar, and one is a measurement of stream flow, whatever that means. But every year, we use the calendar. I guess this begins May 1st?
Does.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spataro.
We put this in place, but with a heavy hand from the state who's always asking for such activity. So it's a good thing to do, but we do have, you know, we're not just doing it on our own. The state is asking us every year to cut down on water consumption.
Thank you. And thank you for my... Do we need to read this, or is this posted online so that anybody's interested in the rules for...
It will be.
It will be. Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is vote to appoint special seasonal police officers as presented. Chief, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Al and Steve, for your service. It's a lot of work that a lot of people don't understand, but you've earned every penny.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. I thank.
Well, you've been a real gentleman on the work, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Do you want to speak to this?
I don't need to. I just thought I'd be here in case it's the same program we're gonna do as we did last year. These people work part-time from May 1st through middle of September, and primarily in the downtown.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be a great idea if you read the names so that people would know who they are.
You'll ring on top of your game tonight, not just...
I'm just gonna make it as miserable as possible.
Okay. Let me read these names so that we all know who these special officers are. Anthony J. Keeney, Charles A. Lemieux, Wayne G. Lee, Boz S. McManon, Raymond E. Molesky, Andrew C. Seataquest, and Robert A. Stephanio. Those are the officers that we're going to appoint as, we're asking us to appoint as special police officers for the summer. Have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion, or suggestions?
I could make some, but no, not relative to this.
That's okay. You're doing fine on your own. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, I guess the town manager wanted me to make this one of my last parting gifts to residents of the town of Middleborough. We are going to vote to set water, wastewater, and trash rates for the coming year. As been the case with the new, with that plan, the 25-year plan to improve water and wastewater infrastructure, we started increasing specifically our wastewater rates in anticipation of our new wastewater treatment plant, and that's well on its way. So we're again, town managers again recommending a 14% increase in wastewater. Do we have to vote these individually?
15% in wastewater and 4% in water.
Thank you. 15% in wastewater and 4% in water.
Which is, which is in keeping with the last two years. So this will be the third year that we've done this.
We've done this.
Right. And as you know, when we did the Water Capital Plan and, you know, the preparation for the treatment plant, we have a lot of work to do. We have water treatment plants, water tanks, other water infrastructure to do, and of course, we have the wastewater upgrade that we're starting on, and we're about to have a contract coming for the board for the design services for that. So in order to afford that, it requires increasing rates, and, you know, this is, you know, basically the path we need to be on in order to afford all that work.
Good news on the trash rates. They won't be in... Good news on the trash rates, they won't be increasing next year. But as town manager just summarized, these rate increases substantial in wastewater, but they're needed in order for us to prepare for our new wastewater treatment plant. There's no way of avoiding that. We need to upgrade the plant, it's gonna cost the users more money to do that, and we're just trying to spread it out a little more evenly rather than have huge increases in the tail end of this project. Any discussion, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon?
Relative to the trash rates, Charlie, I mean, I'm glad we're not raising them, but are we putting aside some money and are we looking at the possibility of going to a, switching the type of trash pickup trucks?
Yeah, exactly. In fact, one of the last thing Andy Baggis is doing for me before he leaves this week is putting together a, a plan for moving to a mechanical collection, you know, with larger barrels for recycling, so that we can accommodate more recycling, and, you know, essentially a mechanical collection system, so we would need fewer personnel, but, you know, different equipment, and trying to orchestrate that probably for a year from now, if we can. And, you know, doing that, you know, within the existing rate structure that we have. So that's, you know, that's the plan that we have, and, you know, we'll be working on that in the coming months.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Spataro? Is that gonna require citizens to get any special kind of barrels?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll have to change barrels for everybody, and we're looking at how to do that. There, there is some grant money out there, we'll be trying to get some grant money to help pay for that.
Are we gonna use the same type of barrels for recycling also?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll be, like I said, the recycling barrels will be larger because they'll be single-stream, people will be able to put all of their recycling in one container, and that too will be, you know, collected with using a mechanical arm collection system. So, you know, so they'll all be capable of being handled by a, we won't have guys throwing trash, you know, in the back of, you know, vehicles anymore, it'll be all done mechanically.
Which certainly should help with the health and safety of the...
Yeah.
...teams out there, because they're right now, in the weathers, weather conditions that they work in, sometimes when it could be icy or whatever, somebody picks up a heavy barrel and could slip and fall and hurt themselves badly, and...
No, we, we have more injuries in the, in the trash area than we have anywhere else. So it really, it cries out for doing it differently. With a mechanical system, the driver sits in the truck, drives, never gets out, and the mechanical arm picks up, picks up the barrel.
Okay, very good.
Really gonna miss walking into my neighbor's yard and getting my trash cover.
Yeah, these, these covers are attached, as you know.
Before we go on this, I just want to give everybody an idea of what these increases will mean to you. For the water, 4% increase effective July 1st, 2013, for a single family, it's $8, we're estimating $8.22 a year increase, and for a family of four, it's $23.50. For wastewater, 15% increase for FY14, beginning July 1st, 2013, we're estimating $59.91 annual increase for the users of our wastewater system.
For a family of four?
Excuse me?
For a family of four.
For a family of four, thank you. So with that, am I gonna have a motion? The move?
Second.
The motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is vote to ratify the following union contracts, police superior officers. Should we take these one at a time?
No, why don't you read through them and I'll explain them.
Police off, superior officers contract, DPW contract, the library, and the clerical union. Charlie?
These are the agreements, are the, the result of the memorandum of agreements that we signed a year ago, and presented at town meeting a year ago, and what we've done is we've taken those agreements and, and integrated them into the existing contracts, so now we have a, a contract that, that contains all the, the agreements that the town has with the various union, unions. So, so there's nothing new here, these are just the, the contracts that are the result of the memorandum that we signed a year ago. Now that we've signed some additional memorandum, we'll have to integrate those into the contracts, and that'll come back before you in the next several months, so...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. These contracts were discussed in detail when we discussed the memorandum, so I think everybody's aware, I mean, the big one is a 2%...
Yeah, these were from last year, the, these were one-year agreements, 2% and...
2% and then...
Very little else, in the minor, minor changes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is vote to sign a notice to vacate at 122 Cedar Street. Charlie, you want to give us a summary on this one?
Yes, this is a, a property that the town foreclosed on for non-payment of taxes. I think the final foreclosure was back in September, and that's after the Year's Rite of Redemption, so this, this property now is owned by the town, and we need to, you know, get control of the property so we can sell it and, and get our, our tax money back. And I've talked to Mr. Verklo, in fact, I believe he's here tonight, he'll, he'll want to address you, I, I talked to him about voluntarily leaving the property and giving him a date whereby that would be acceptable, but I think we need nonetheless to proceed on this front as well, in the event he, he doesn't leave at the agreed-upon time that the town has the ability to, to take action, so that's what this document does.
Please introduce yourself.
Kenneth Verklo, 122 Cedar Street, Middleboro. I've been at my address for over 10 years, and raised my son. And I did show you, you know, what I got from my mortgage company in September of last year, and then what I got in December from the town, which gave me two weeks to pay my dad mortgage, or taxes. And truthfully, it was kind of like, you know, news to me because my mortgage company usually paid my taxes, and how, I didn't know this from 2007 till now, or last year, I should say. I don't understand that, and, but it's still my fault, I understand that.
It's not your fault.
No, it is, because I should know what's going on with my...
Yeah, you must have been getting notices from the town that your taxes hadn't been paid.
But my mortgage company was paying them, and then they never told me that, the last one they sent me, last September, was that I owed $246 to the town, and to pay it, otherwise it would be a lien on the property. That's what I got, I mean, it's right here. And then, in November, I got one from the town saying that, you know, well, I called them right after I got this one from my mortgage company, and they said, "We own the property, we won't take no money from you." So they did not give me even a chance to do anything.
Well, once the one-year lasts, for you to kind of correct the situation, there's no, there's no way of going back, of preventing from going back.
My mortgage company called me two months ago, saying that they still wanted money. I'm like, "You don't own the property, apparently, so what is going on?" And I don't know.
The town sends the notices to you.
All right, I understand that.
And so what did you do? You ignored them?
No, I thought because of my mortgage company kept calling me, saying, "All right, just pay us this much money," and all good and dandy, and, I mean, this has just been since September. All I'm asking is to give me till August 1st, and I owe $35,000, and I can come up with that by August 1st.
Charlie, how many of you, I don't think the board has the authority to extend this time, do we?
Well, the, the board has not, once the Year's Rite of Redemption is passed, the board has not allowed properties to be redeemed, you know. Fortunately, we haven't had many situations like this, but, you know, we recently had a situation in January with Mr. Evans, and the board continued that practice of, you know, after the, the Rite of Redemption is over, you know, the town owns the property.
It's not that much money, I mean, I can pay the town off, and just give them, you know, a little bit of time. I've been there for a while, raised my son, he's still there with me, and we have a 90-pound dog, which I can't even find a place to rent for the warranty, you know, and I love, I mean, I just had my garage and breezeway run down from the dryer, so, I mean, I just need just a little time because I will pay them, if you grace me, and...
Yeah, the tax hasn't been paid since 2006, right, or the last year?
I think 2007.
2007, the end of the year.
It's 20... I know it's $35,000, and I can, I can come up with that. I can. I just asked for a little time.
I, I guess, what I don't, and I'm gonna turn over other questions, what I don't understand is you made a statement that you were making tax escrow payments to your mortgage company, and they were paying your tax bill for you. So they, they would have paid those taxes. If there was money in escrow, they would have paid it, because they also get a copy to pay your taxes for you. So, so what, what would happen?
Well...
The mortgage company wouldn't just stop paying your taxes for you.
No, they were just paying them, anyway, it wasn't in my tax, my mortgage.
It was not.
But they were paying them anyway, because when I was paying my mortgage...
Is way behind.
I was getting behind, yes, because I'm disabled now, and I've just been disabled for a couple plus years, and I'm a carpenter, roofer, so things have been rough, you know, but, I mean, for the amount of money that I owe the town, I know that I can, you know, get it through a couple different sources. I just need a little time.
I'd like to answer a question, have the board members, if they have one. Steve?
Uh, sir, you, you say you've been, you've been, the mortgage company you thought was paying your taxes even though you don't have an escrow, an arrangement with your mortgage company?
Can I show you this?
No, you can show it to me, but...
No, but this is from last September from my mortgage company, and they didn't even own the property, so when I called the town, they said, "Don't, don't even bother paying." And so I didn't even get a chance to do anything.
Back the microphone, because people can't hear you.
Well, for all these years, you've been paying, you, you're assuming that your mortgage interest is, your mo, your taxes are being paid?
Yes.
And nobody was paying the taxes, and, I mean, there had to be demand notices you were getting from the town?
But, um, usually...
And you just ignored those?
Isn't the town, usually it's like three years, and then they take over your property?
We did that, and, I mean, we let you ride from 2007 to now, then we gave you another year to redeem this, and you chose, you chose not to redeem it, and now you're here before us, asking to extend it even further.
I'm asking for three months, sir.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, the board has a practice of not allowing, we allow you a year. We send you notices every year that your taxes are behind, and informing you that the town can, can foreclose, and then we give you a year after that to redeem it, and you chose not to do that, and now you're here before us, after that year has passed, asking us to extend it again. This is not easy for the board to do, to take property away from, from residents, and now we do it very rarely, and that's why we have such a liberal policy of, of extending a great deal of time to allow residents to get current, and, and you haven't done that. We don't enjoy, at least I don't enjoy doing this, I don't, I don't think the town wants its own property, that's not what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman.
But, but we have a practice, yes, Mr. Spataro?
Charlie, did we send a notification of tax, still inconceived, is it just a mortgage holder or the property owner as well, to the resident?
Yeah, I talked to Judy Day, and she has confirmation, and notices were sent to Mr. Verklo.
Going back, like for the years past.
Any other questions? Do you have anything else to say?
Can I have till August 1st to move then?
All right, thank you.
And can I find out when you auctioned it off, so maybe I can buy it back?
Ben, you have anything, Mr. Spataro?
Well, it's an auction.
Excuse me?
Well, it's an auction, I don't see why you can't...
It would be published.
It'll be posted.
That gets published.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the letter that we have before us.
Notice to vacate?
Right. Notice to vacate.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve or sign the notice to vacate, 122 Cedar Street. Any other discussion?
What day?
I think, I think I agreed with Mr. Verklo for July 15th.
To July 15th?
Should we go to August 1st?
To, he can stay in the property till July 15th?
We can, we can, we can say August 1st, that's, that's fine.
Excuse me?
We could, we could, we could say August 1st, that's fine.
That's his request.
That's his request.
August 1st?
Yeah.
But you understand you have to vacate, he's not gonna be allowed to redeem the property by coming up with a $35 grant?
No, no.
I just want you to make, make sure you understand what the, what we're gonna vote on here tonight.
And then I can go to the auction, and I'll have the money to buy back my house after I move on. All right, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to send the notice to vacate by August 1st. Is that, is that the motion before?
Well, you, you're, the motion is to sign this, and I'll send Mr. Verklo a separate letter, you know, telling him that he has to August 1st.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Next item is vote to accept resignation of Kevin F. Franzosa from the Permanent Cable Committee. We have an email from Kevin indicating to, to the chairman of the Permanent Cable Committee, "After almost 30 years, I have decided to resign from the Permanent Cable Committee effective April 1st, 2013. Please accept this, this as my official resignation. As I mentioned to you previously, my heart is just not in it anymore, and the town deserves a committee that is focused on the best interest of the town. I have dropped off Karen's office all the papers, and as quoted in the statements, I will miss the spirited discussions of the issues, and I know the committee will continue to fight the good fight. First, I want to thank Mr. Franzosa for his years, 30 years is a long time, to spend on, on a committee working for the town, and for that, I thank you." What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept the letter of resignation, and also I would ask that we send him a thank you letter.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Didn't think you were gonna get out without writing a letter, did you, Jake?
I didn't.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is to vote to sign a memorandum of agreement with the firefighters, Charlie, want to give us a summary on this, please?
That's a separate document in your, your iPad tonight. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this, this agreement is similar to the, the two we approved at town meeting last Monday. Basically, it's a one-year agreement, 2% costability increase, the town gets a, a new rate structure for new, new employees after July 1, for healthcare, a 70/30 split on healthcare as opposed to the 80/20 split for, for current employees. There are a couple other minor changes in the contract. One of the other new items, though, is a provision to offer a buyout of, of people for their, who are currently members of the health plan. who are currently members of the health plan, uh, either a thousand dollars for an individual plan, or twenty-five hundred dollars for a family plan. Uh, we would pay them not to take the town's healthcare, and, and right now, the town's healthcare costs is about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, there's an incentive built into this contract to, you know, to offer people, if they have a, uh, you know, coverage available through a spouse, uh, that they can get, uh, that would, you know, uh, allow them to collect some money, and it would save us, uh, some money on our healthcare costs. That's the outlines of it.
That last provision, that last provision is being offered to all the unions?
Um, basically, we, um, are offering it, um, now, uh, we didn't have that in, in the agreements before.
So, this is for the new agreement?
This, this came up during bargaining with some, some, you know, one of the units, and, uh, you know, this unit was interested in it. Certainly, if any of the unions that we've already come to an agreement with wanna, um, take advantage of it, we would extend it to them as well.
Any other questions, my board members? Mrs. McKinnon?
Charlie, what happens, not that this would, but suppose somebody takes their wife, significant other...
Right.
Takes the healthcare at their operation, or their facility?
Yeah.
And our guy comes off the healthcare plan here. And then, say, five, six, seven months, eight months from now, that person loses their job. So, the town employee would have to come back on the healthcare plan. How would, would we recoup that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right here in the last paragraph, if there is a qualifying event, which means that the employee who's receiving an opt-out payment needs to re-enroll in the town health insurance, the payment will be prorated based on the number of months that the employee was not enrolled. So, um, usually a qualifying event allows somebody to get right back in, they don't have to wait for an open enrollment period, and we just prorate the payment.
Okay. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, ayes have it. The next item is vote to sign a license agreement for the property off Wareham Street.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a, a property that abuts the DPW that we've been using for the last several months to store equipment, and, uh, Mr. Baggis, uh, asked if we could continue to use it for the next several months as well. So, this is a four-month license, uh, you know, with the property owner here, and a thousand dollars a month.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? For the, this is a piece of property, it's of Thomas Brothers Construction Company, behind our current DPW building that we've been using to store equipment, so we're just gonna continue this for another four months.
And when we say store equipment, they have a barn, they have a...
Yeah, they have a large barn.
Allows us to get the equipment out of the elements...
Right.
Which, uh, saves us money, uh, because it's not rusting, et cetera.
Okay, always making faces at me. All those in favor?
Aye.
None.
Aye, all those opposed, ayes have it. Uh, we have nothing under hearings, meetings, much town, Charlie, you have a report this week?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to report, Mr. Chairman, is that I've greatly enjoyed working with you and with Ms. Sprotaro for the last several years. Uh, it's, it's really been a pleasure, uh, and, uh, you know, while, you know, invariably selectmen, you know, do not stay forever, uh, I, I want you to know that, uh, it is with great regret that I see you leave the board.
Thank you, thank you very much. Correspondence, uh, we will start with Mr. McKinnon.
No, why don't you start on the other end this time?
Wanna start the other end?
Yeah, go to the other end, the bus.
I'm not going to, Mr. McKinnon, you're up.
Nice, nice, very good time.
Thank you.
Okay, then I wanna talk about item number one.
No, I don't, act, actually, I, I am remiss, I did not get to review the correspondence this week.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. McTell?
Uh, item number sixteen, Cape Train, Boston Globe, South article. Uh, we saw the article in the paper about, uh, the train going down to the Cape, going down through South Middleboro, where a lot of the crossings have, uh, no restrictions at all, and, uh, we know that there were residents that were concerned about that. Do you have any guidance or any comments that you can make, Charlie?
Yeah, I, um, I did attend the meeting last week down in Wareham, that they finally organized to talk about safety issues, because, you know, while, um, you know, we do have gates, and we do have bells at, at the crossings, um, you know, there are, there are older variety, uh, they're, they're not as safe as the, the newer ones that they're installing when they, they build new, new rail. And, and, and much of the, the, the right-of-way and, and the track is exposed, it's not, you know, it's not fenced in. Uh, so I made a request at that meeting, which I followed up in writing, uh, Friday, that, um, someone come to either our, your next meeting or the meeting thereafter, to come and, and talk about safety, and about what is gonna be different here, because we're gonna have trains going through town at about sixty miles an hour. Uh, and that's very different from what's there now with the, with the trash train, uh, which comes through about thirty miles an hour. People have to be wary of, you know, um, being anywhere near that track, um, be wary of going through those grade crossings when the, when the signals start, you know, um, flashing and, and the gates come down, um, because, you know, this is a, a powerful piece of equipment going at a very high rate of speed, and, and it takes a mile for it to stop. You know, at sixty miles an hour, it takes a mile for it to stop, so, uh, there's, there's no margin for error here, and I think, you know, we have to make sure that people in the community are, are aware that, you know, the, the, you know, starting May twenty-fourth, uh, things are different around the rail line, uh, in Middleboro, uh, and the other communities south of us. So, I, I hope we'll, we'll get a positive response, and someone can come out, and we start the, the education process, and, and just making people aware, making children aware, making drivers aware, making people who live along the right-of-way aware of, you know, that, um, you know, it's a, it's a new, new world, um, you know, with, with these high-speed trains, uh, coming through town.
Uh, was, uh, were you supported by the other communities?
Absolutely, yeah, Rochester was there, Wareham was there, um, uh, you know, so, you know, they, they said the same. You know, it, I, I, I don't know why, and I've never seen a, a rail line established as quickly as this one is. Usually, there's a lot of planning, a lot of education, you know, a lot of warning, and, you know, we didn't find out about this until, you know, about a month ago, when the construction company came and said they were gonna re, refurbish the grade crossings, and that was the first we heard that this was going to happen. And, uh, you know, and, and just, like I said, just last week, they started talking about safety with less than a month ago. I mean, literally less than a month ago. So, uh, so there's, I, you know, I think there's a lot of education to be done, a lot of, you know, the word's gotta get out, that, uh, you know, this, this, these, you know, these trains are gonna be here on the twenty-fourth of May, uh, and they're gonna be traveling really fast.
Beyond awareness and upgrading the signals at the crossing, is you talk about putting up a chain link fence, you see chain link fences all along the commuter rails to prevent people from...
And animals.
And animals from crossing into that path. These, these crossings are in residential neighborhoods. There are kids that live near the street, and if there's not fencing provided, I'm, I'm concerned about that. Railroad, upgrading the railroad crossing is not enough, in my opinion. Chain link fencing needs to be addressed as they're going through those immediate residential areas.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's a, that's a good point, and, um, you know, maybe we have to send a letter to that, you know, effect, because I didn't hear any of that discussion last week, that there didn't seem to be any, um, any thinking at all about, about doing any, any more than what's already there.
Yeah.
You know, other than making sure that, you know, what's already there is there, and some additional pavement markings. I don't hear anything else being discussed.
So, when we talk about grade crossing, we're not talking about, uh, new arms and all that type of stuff? We're just talking, we're talking about making these...
The railroad ties and the ground.
Yeah.
That's all they're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they are rebuilding, finally, they are rebuilding Miller, and they're, you know, and...
We've been asking to do that for a while, we just didn't expect them to put a sixty-mile-an-hour train on it.
Right, right.
Without telling us.
What would you want us to do? Would you want the board to sign the letter, would you, what do you want us to do?
Yeah, you know, I think, uh, you know, if that, that is, I think that's probably something that we should do, is, you know, say to them, you know, "Given what you're gonna be sending through town, uh, having, you know, more fencing in residential areas is, is, is entirely appropriate and, and necessary."
You may mention this, but I was, are they planning to attend the selectman's meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to get them either to the, the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, that's what I, I asked them last week.
Hopefully, there'll be a larger tenet to that meeting, so that we can all express our concern.
Are you coming back, Al, already?
I'll be back.
You're not even done yet, and you're talking about coming back.
I'll be back.
Every time you try to get up, they pull you back in.
Yeah, somebody said that.
So, so be, uh, beyond that meeting, let's send that letter, how many, can we send that letter?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to send a letter, uh, expressing our concerns.
I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to, um, send a letter also to all communities that are up and down the rail as well, asking them for their support.
Let's vote on the amendment first.
Motion approved.
Second on the amendment?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, on the regular motion, um, we have motion and a... Do we have a second on the first motion? We do.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, ayes have it. Uh, and here comes Brian, come on down.
Mr. Chairman, on, on that item, um, I was speaking to some people down in South Middleboro that were concerned about this item, so if we do have people coming in to a selectman's meeting, um, we can somehow get it out to the public, you know, through, you know, the prize, or the Gazette, if possible, because I'm sure, actually, one person just texted me and said, "Hey, I just heard this," they're watching at home, so hopefully, if we get it out to the people, they'll get up here, because they're, they're voiced down there. People forget about South Middleboro, we don't, but they forget about us in Middleboro, and the state forgets us, and then they forget South Middleboro.
Thanks, Brian. That was it for me. That was it for you, Alan?
That was kind of it for me as well.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. Tom River Watershed Alliance had, sent their newsletter out. I always like, I just like to read it, it's a, it's a pretty good little, uh, newsletter.
Mm-hmm.
Herring is still running, if anybody's...
Herring, how did, it's slowing down, I was...
Slowing down, slowing down, there's a couple stragglers.
On that, on that note, yes, Steve, the Thomas Park looks absolutely fabulous.
It does look good, whoever, who cleaned that up, that was nice, nice job.
Larry DiRuda and, uh, some other folks, right?
Exactly.
So, that looks absolutely go, it looks like it did when it was first created, it looks good.
Anything else, Alan?
Just along that, um, who's in charge of the park now? Just, well, you know, if we don't have it today, we're gonna have it next year.
I, I, I think ultimately, we, we are, because, um...
Can we just transfer it to the park department, so we don't ever have to have this conversation again?
Um, you know, that's, and, you know, it's worth talking about, you know, whether, you know, you wanna do that or not. The G and E makes the, the point that they can't hold property, so, you know, even though our listing is theirs, it's probably not theirs, uh, it's probably ours, um, you know, and, and, long-term, if you want, you know, if you think that's what you wanna do.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
You said the G and E can't hold property?
That's, that's what, I keep hearing from them.
What are their transmission, what, when they have a, a transformer site? What is that, visitors of land?
And Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. McTell?
I'd be remiss if I didn't also say, Oliver Mill Park is also looking quite nice, and a new sign, what the people are doing down there. You know, both of those, Alan, I know that you have a, a personal vested interest in those, uh, they both look, uh, great.
You have something else I just...
I just remember something too, yeah. But yeah, just as, as far as Thomas Park is concerned, when this comes up again, if we don't get it settled this time, I'm not gonna be nearly as nice or cordial about it at the meetings as I have been, because it, we have an opportunity to fix the problem now, and if we continue to let it go on, I'm gonna be awful aggravated the next time I have to address it at a meeting. Just letting people know.
Mr. Frawley?
Why don't we just simply say... I make a motion that we put the Thomas Park under the park commission.
Second.
Yeah, the motion, can we do it this easily?
As for maintenance purposes.
Nothing is this easy. That's one thing I've learned in the four years, just make, make a decision and move on, it takes...
Maybe by the end of my term.
Maybe, maybe, what, what, what needs to be done here, we have to, uh...
G and E has to say that it's in charge of the select, the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I, I think, I, you know, I'm relying on their, their, you know, representations, I, I need to check that with them.
They're relying on the G and E.
See if that's, that's accurate, and if it is, I think it's a town meeting vote to transfer property from one, uh, if you wanna, you know, transfer, formally transfer property to another entity.
Well, we oughta put it on the agenda, the future agenda item, so we don't lose track of it, Jackie, so we prepare the agenda for next week. Put it on there, the week, at least you can keep track of it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Week out, next week, we'll let other things be added up.
It's the week after?
We have a training session next week.
Oh, that's right, you guys are gonna have a training, I never had a formal training session.
That's right.
You didn't need...
That's because you just come in like gangbusters and took over. You didn't care what anybody said. Alright, then.
Uh, there, there is one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Frawley.
I'm trying to find it, but there is the annual Damascus River canoe race is coming up against...
Oh, isn't there?
I should've, I, if I had thought about it, I would've brought my trophy.
Can we do a little thing we have?
That's right.
Can we get a little case and mount it up on the wall underneath the...
My daughter actually steals it from me, and says it's her trophy.
Good idea.
But, uh, so on Saturday, May eighteenth, at eleven AM, the, uh, annual Damascus River canoe race is gonna be starting at the Wareham, uh, at the Old Bridge Street Bridge, and it's, um, twenty dollars per boat for pre-registration, and thirty dollars a day of. And this race will be followed by the annual Oliver Mill Duck Race, and ducks are available for files each. Uh, please contact the Middleboro Parks Department for any questions at five oh eight, nine four six, two four four zero.
Are you gonna be in the race again?
I will most certainly be in the race again.
What color is your canoe?
It's, uh, oddly enough, it's camouflage.
Camouflage.
You can't see me.
I wanna be there to kinda urge you on.
I heard you got some new kayaks.
And some special wear.
I, I am formally challenging your wife to a race. I guess she's the better paddler, isn't she?
Much better.
But any, if any of the former selectmen, current selectmen, or possibly new selectmen would like to join me in that race, the winner...
See that, you got one.
The winner is treated to a pizza at a centrally located restaurant after a Monday night meeting.
Alright, then. Anything else, Mr. Frawley?
Uh, that's it, for now.
Okay, you can come back any time.
You know, I really don't wanna, excuse my voice, by the way, I'm under the weather. Um, I, I don't think we really need to address these things, because I think they're sort of future matters, but, um, I guess first, if, if, Charlie, this letter from the Plymouth County Retirement Association, I mean, this is pretty much built.
Yeah, it's built, yeah.
So, I've come up with half of five large, and the other half, paid it down the road, okay. As far as the MGC, I, I'm sure there'll be more to come on that, I mean, is this something that we're gonna want to take on as a board, to make sure that it's, that, you know, our voice goes out in writing somehow? Um, I mean, they're certainly looking for, in, you know, input, but I don't know if we're gonna do it as a board, or we're just gonna allow those who wanna... I mean, they're asking, we've talked about it, it seems like an opportunity to be heard, so, I, I think maybe it's something we could put on the agenda later.
Well, is there a timeframe for comments on these, uh...
Like I said, you know, take a look at it and think about it, I don't expect any, any, you know, decisions today, I'm just thinking if we could just ta, take a look at that when you get home again, and see if this is something we wanna officially look at. I think it'd be worth, um...
It's item fifteen you're talking about, in G C?
Uh, yes, yeah. And, um, you know, the MBTA, you know, I, I read their tough choices report, I, I think a lot of their information, this affects a lot of our, our citizens, I mean, I think their information is very sort of spurious. They really didn't give them much of a choice, you know, either allow us just to increase your fare period, or, or increase fares a little bit, and then cut your, your service. Not, you know, I, a lot of people who take the train, uh, you know, don't do, you know, they're reluctant customers, they, they don't go to Boston because they like to, they go to Boston because they have to. Um, and I think that this, um, that this article was, was almost comical, the way they're just saying, you know, "Do you want us just to raise your rates?" Well, yeah, if that's what it takes not to cut my service, I still gotta get the work, so, uh, I thought that was, you know, just another sign of the problems that are going on with this, that calamity. Um, other than that, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McKinnon?
Nope, I don't have anything, everybody covered everything I was gonna cover.
What?
Good job, keep up the good work.
Jay doesn't have anything regarding correspondence. Uh, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, one last thanks for everyone for supporting me during my term here as selectman. It's been my pleasure, um, and I truly enjoy the job, so, thanks again. With that, I'll entertain, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, ayes have it.